Broadcast of the City of Manassia Administration Committee, Board of Public Works, and Common Council Meetings are produced by University Studios of the University of Wisconsin, Fox Valley. Manassia residents and interested parties can obtain information about these meetings and meeting agendas from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, (920) 967-5117. Contacting their city alderman, contact information appears on the website. Completing the electronic feedback form on the website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited for playback.
I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we begin this evening, if we could take a moment to reflect on the life and accomplishments of Dr. Martin Luther King, and I have a couple of quotes from him today before we start that I thought were kind of appropriate. Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others? And the time is always right to do what is right. So if we could think about those as reflect on Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you. Alderman Taylor also would like to...
I'd just like to have a moment of respect for Andrew Bud Delau, Alderman for many years in the City of Manassia and a real community active person. Thank you.
If we could start with a roll, please?
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Collier.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Grady.
Here.
Alderman Better.
Here.
Alderman Nichols. The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone from the public who'd like to speak this evening, you could step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and we'd be happy to hear from you. No? Item two is the report of Department head staff consultants. We have the minutes and communications to receive this evening. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through H and Communications I through J.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. This has to do with Park and Recs. Brian, on the item F on discussion for the Loop the Little Lake Project update during the committee, it said that some progress was made on several concerns for that trail behind the plant. They had discussions in. Could you just elaborate a little bit on what progress was made on that?
So before Christmas, we met with plant officials and some of their commissioners over at the treatment plant. And we ended the meeting, I think, on a high note. I think they are receptive to the idea, but there are several issues to be worked out yet. And so we started that process, and I guess I'll keep everybody informed as we move forward, but it's headed in a pretty good direction, I think.
Okay, so a positive moving forward towards that direction then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is the consent agenda. There are 12 items this evening. Is that a record? Debbie says we've had 14 before. The minutes to approve from the Common Council Meeting of January 2nd. The Board of Public Works recommendations from January 2nd, including a change order to MCC for new street construction reconstruction, various streets, $25,634.06, change order number one and final. A payment to MCC. New street construction reconstruction and rehabilitation, various streets, $149,103.04, payment number six and final. Payment for Pfeiffer Brothers Construction for the Loop the Lake Bridge crossings of $186,499.80, payment two. And to reduce the number of overnight parking spots and consolidate them to the east side of the Broad Street parking lot. Nina Manassia Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendations from January 4th for the purchase of equipment to replace the SCBA system from Five Alarm for a total cost not to exceed $219,489, with Nina Manassia Fire Rescue's required match not to exceed The recommendation that Nina Manassia Fire Rescue apply to FEMA to request the use of $38,210 remaining funds from the grant award towards the purchase of a Cascade system for Station 31. New RAT packs and additional spare SCBA cylinders. The recommendation that Nina Manassia Fire Rescue purchase a Cascade system for Station 31, RIT packs and additional SCBA spare cylinders. The purchases would not be made until confirmation is received from FEMA on the use of remaining grant funds. If granted, the use of the remaining $38,210 in funding, the cost would not exceed $9,790. If FEMA does not grant the use of the $38,210 remaining funds, the cost is not to exceed The recommendation from Nina Manassia Fire Rescue to remove old equipment from service and sell this equipment once new SCBA equipment is placed into service. The Park and Recreation Board recommendations from January 9th to establish an annual permit fee of $900 for the use of the Harbor House room and to eliminate a previous recommendation to include an option for a $75 monthly fee. The change is in the park and rec and pool fee schedule for 2018. And the Ad Hoc Protocol Committee recommendation from January 8th for the attached rules memorandum dated January 11th to the Common Council with the intent to create a set of rules of the Common Council to be adopted at the annual organizational meeting. Does anyone wish to have items separated this evening? I heard a ding. There we go. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like item number 10.
Alderman Nichols?
Item 12.
Okay. 10 and 12, correct? Okay, any others? Seeing none, do we have the motion for the remaining items? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11.
Second.
So motion and a second? Could we have a roll call vote, please? Not yet. There we go.
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item number 10 was to establish an annual permit fee of $900 for the use of the Harbor House. Does anyone wish to make a motion this evening? Alderman Grady?
I'd like to make a motion to establish the annual permit fee of $900 for the use of the Harbor House room and to eliminate a previous recommendation to include an optional $75 monthly fee.
There's a motion and a second?
Do we have discussion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually had two questions really quick. One of them had to do with the rules and regulations that they brought forth on this. Is this an appropriate time to discuss this? Okay. Brian, on the adopted rules for the Harbor House to begin with, the security deposit is $50. Is there any reason why it was so low for a security deposit on the Harbor House for a whole entire year's worth of lease or rent? Excuse me?
Well, that subject didn't solicit a whole lot of discussion at the Park Board meeting. We typically have never really had a security deposit in any of our facilities, so it was kind of something new. And we really didn't experience any troubles last year with the arrangement that we had. So, yeah, I mean, I understand it's a fairly small amount, but it's a fairly small building to a fairly small room.
Okay. And the other question I had on the adopted rules had to do with the signage, that any sign mounts and everything else would have to comply with city ordinance and other park regulations. Right now, their business name is painted on the side of the building. Does that correspond to city ordinance or park rules?
Are you referring to what's on the west side of the building?
Yes.
I believe?
Yes.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe the American can jump in here, but it was painted and I thought it was removed, and then they have their own separate sign up there now. I think it's screwed in now?
It's screwed in, okay.
Originally, it was painted, and we weren't crazy about that. So they took that off, and then they put a board over it, you know, painted it, and then attached the board to the side of the building?
All right. Okay, thank you. And my last part is having to do with the actual permit cost of $900. As when we talked previously, I told you where my comfort level was, and I think a comfort level of $1,200 will be really appropriate. $100 a month for a whole year, $1,200. So I'd like to make an amendment to it, changing the $900 use for the year for the Harbor House to $1,200.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion and a second? It was, oh, I'm sorry, by Alderman Zalinski. Correct? Was you on? Okay. Discussion on the rate. Alderman Grady?
Maybe, Brian, you can chime in on this too, but right now, I think they're paying $700 a year? Is that what they paid last year?
Yeah, $700 last year.
Okay, so we go up to 900. That's about a maybe 20%, 30% increase. Prior to them being in this building, has anybody else been in there, or have you been any other offers?
No, there has, well, I know there's no other offers. Has there been somebody in that building over the past 25 years? Yes. Couple people have come in there and used it for various things over the years.
And again, what is furnished in this permit as to utilities?
It's just electricity.
Right, there's no bathroom?
No bathrooms there. The arrangement we had last year was, you know, there's a restroom facility nearby, so they were given a key for that.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have anything else? Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call on the amendment?
Mayor, it's a tie. Did you want to vote?
I would choose not to vote at this point, so the motion would fail.
Motion fails on roll call 4-4.
Alderman Zalinski? Oops, I'm sorry, I got to press the button too.
Oh, thank you. Alderman Kruger brought up the point about the $50 for a security deposit, so I'd like to make an amendment that would be...
Right now, the Park Board makes the rules, so you would not have the ability...
The credibility to change security deposit?
To change the rules, no.
I don't think so.
What is your point of order, Alderman? Sevenik?
The council, when it comes to fees or any type of regulations, goes through the council for final approval. I would think that if we direct a motion, that that would stand, and I would think that if he wished to make a motion to increase that, that that would be germane. In fact, I would second his motion.
So the item that's on the agenda is the fee for the use of the facility. The rules that go along with the use would be done by the Park Board, as the attorney and I both would agree, so I would say your motion is not germane.
Well, Mayor, as you realize, I mean, we could go back to a lease, and, you know, we're compromising here and giving a lot of leeway, and I think that this is extremely a lot of leeway, and I would think that his motion would be in order. And I just hope that you don't come into a situation, I mean, Mr. Zalinski's an expert in this area, his family is involved with dealing with people that they rent to, and you want yourself protected with a decent security deposit. $50 won't even cover a paint job, so I would think that...
So if you would want to overrule my ruling, you could take a vote, and if the council wanted to overrule that, then we could move forward with that?
You're right, okay. I'll make a motion to overrule your ruling in that we allow for the amendment.
Okay, we need, so we have a motion and a second to overrule, and we would have a roll call vote on that at this point then? And before we take the vote, I guess we should clarify which way is which. Attorney, would you like to tell us which way is which, because I'm confused every time as well? If they're agreeing with me, they would vote which way, and if they're agreeing with We're just going to do it this way. If you agree with me, it's a yes vote. If you agree with Stan, it's a no vote.
I will.
Just so that we all know which way we're voting. I think that's... Yours doesn't work?
No, it works. My brain doesn't work.
Oh, if you, if you agree with me and want to uphold my ruling, it's a yes. If you agree with Stan and want to reverse the ruling, it's a no.
Motion fails on, excuse me, motion fails on roll call 2-6.
So that means we would accept a motion from Alderman Zalinski? And what was your motion, Alderman? Hold on, I can't do it quite yet. There you go.
Thank you. I'd like to increase the security deposit rate. I think it's considered a fee at this point. It's a reimbursable fee, but it's still a fee. Increase it to $150, basically the first and last month's rent, because I'm basing off the $70 monthly fee.
So motion and a second to amend to include a $150 security fee. Any discussion? Alderman Better?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Brian, do we have any security deposits that require on any of our other buildings that we charge permit fees for, like pavilions or anything like that?
No, we don't. The only deposit we have right now is a key deposit.
And how much is that?
$20.
Okay, and when they return the key, then they get their $20 back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Attorney Captain, is this applicable in this case to be able to do that?
If you wanted to impose a fee, the council can choose to impose that, or deposit, I guess is what it would be.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Collier?
Just a question to get clarified. If we're charging them $900 a year, and then we're going to add another $150 for a security deposit, if they're paying for the year upfront, why would we ask for a first and last deposit? Just a question.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. I was just basing it off of a number that would be applicable to this, because it's such a low rent number at this point for $900 for the year. I just went on a $75 monthly fee, and I times it by two, just so it's applicable to what going rates are. But I still think it's low, and I agree with Alderman Kruger that the amount should be
The thinking, but if I'm paying $900 for the year, and I'm paying $150, but now you say I got to pay another $150, $150, I would question that if you can do that, because I'm more or less, well, I thought you were charging...
Total of $150 for a refundable deposit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Back with comparison with the $20, I mean, this is for the entire year. The $20 with the key is usually for a one-day rental kind of situation. So if you want to take 365 times 20, that's much higher. So, but that raises some concerns for me, and I think the Park Board should re-look at deposits, because I know when you hold weddings and things, and they don't do things properly, and they use nails, and they screw in things, and they do damage, and I see it all the time. So I think that's something that you guys will need to readdress. Thank you. And thank you, Mayor, for the leeway.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we know they've already painted their sign on the building, and then they covered it up with another board with their sign painted on it, so the western portion of that building's going to have to be repainted, and, you know, a gallon of paint's $30, $35, and then you got labor, so I think they already owe, so...
Alderman Taylor, we're talking about a security deposit now, something that they already did.
And that's what I'm talking about, Mayor, about that when people do damage to the building, you have to have security deposits to cover that, Mayor. And that's what I'm talking about. So I think they already owe, so at least $100, and that should be addressed, by the way, Director Tungke. And I would like to know also, okay, I'll leave it at that for this, and I want to ask a question about the signage.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll take a roll call.
Motion carried on, roll call 5-3.
Okay, the motion is amended. Do we have any further discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Brian, I'd just like to know if the sign meets our, the city code.
As far as I know, it does.
Would you send me a correspondence on that, then, from the Community Development Department? I have some current businesses downtown that are changing their signage, and they're going through quite a lengthy process with that, so just want to know, make sure we're in code.
The Harbor House would not be part of the landmarks area, so there'd be different regulations for signs in that area. So just so you know, it's not the same throughout the entire downtown. Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 7-1.
Item 12 is the recommendations from the Protocol Committee. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Based on the minutes that have been provided for these meetings, I'm confident that these aren't the only recommendations coming forward from the committee, and so I'd like, I move that we send this item back to committee and that any recommendations be presented together.
Is there a second? So motion and a second to send back to committee, is that debatable? I should really bring my cheat sheet with me, shouldn't I? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. As I had stated at the last council meeting, we have several recommendations. This is only, I believe, probably a third, and if we were going to take each one one by one, as you realize, this committee has probably met more than a dozen times and probably spent more than two hours on each of the meetings, so if that's what's going to happen tonight, then I certainly don't want to be spending hours up here at the council arguing, debating these. These were discussed at length, and it was a full four-zero recommendation from the committee to bring these forward and to take it a step at a time. As you recall, at the last meeting, our final recommendations will come in at our next meeting. So if this goes back there, all I can say is we probably won't be able to bring back the recommendations for the next meeting, because you've added additional delays for us. There's a lot of good work that's being done. Mayor, you'd have to agree with me, our last meeting was probably one of our best meetings, and that's some of the more heavily controversial stuff that's coming forward. So these are just simple changes. We've given minorities a little more power, and we've also just made it more clear for council members, especially future council members, that they know what the rules are, so that when they do receive that packet that Debbie provides for them, that they're educated and know what the rules of the council are. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Could you help me better understand why sending this back to committee would only create a delay? If the committee has completed this much work, it would seem that you would simply add the other two-thirds of your recommendations to this document and bring it forward at the next meeting.
Alderman Sevenik, did you want to come?
I'd almost want to say that your motion is out of order. You lost last, two weeks ago on this issue. You tried to make it that the committee brought everything forward, and we said that's not going to happen. So, yes, it will delay matters, because it will take more time up here with this committee. I don't understand your feelings that it all has to come at one time. I'm trying to set a pace that we can work at this. This took us literally months, and you were telling us we need to do this in 30 days, and now you want to send it back to committee.
Alderman Collier?
It's not a laughing matter. If I'm going to go buy a used car, I'm going to kick out four tires. I don't want to see, I think it did improvement in everything here, and it's looking a lot better. But I also want to see the full package, and just like when we do the budget, you talk about it for five weeks, six weeks, you look at a lot of stuff, but at the end, you got a night to go over it and look at it as a whole, and that's why I'm with Alderman Nichols, thinking we should have the whole package before we vote on it. I just assumed, send it back. Thank you.
Alderman Better?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. My question was, with these rules, that this is a partial document. If we approve these tonight, how does that going to affect the future ones coming to us?
I guess I can talk a little bit, the goal of, I think what we're working forward on the committee is to create the rules of the Common Council and the mayor as a group, and those would be approved at the organizational meeting of each Common Council. So every April, we would approve that.
we would approve that set of rules and/or change that set of rules depending on the desires of the council. So the, I don't know how many were in here, 10 or so rules that were in here, those would be incorporated into the rules of the common council and mayor. We also have a code of ethics for elected official, elected and appointed officials that we talked about at the last meeting. And that's pretty much ready to go. Those are 99% statutory, so there really isn't a lot to discuss there. And then we also have a code of conduct that we reviewed at the last meeting. And that's maybe 75% ready to go. We had some changes we still want to talk about on that. So we could do it, if we do something tonight, it really shows that we feel that these should be incorporated into the rules of the common council and mayor. If we do nothing tonight, we're still going to bring those three items forward to the common council at some point. So it just kind of reaffirms that these are the rules that we think should be moving forward. But I don't think it delays. And if Alderman Sevanek feels differently, he can have a moment to comment on that as well. But...
Probably about the only question that I really had was with item F. It says the chair may recess at any point during the meeting with a majority vote. And is there any other language within the remaining document that references anything like that?
That's actually Robert's Rules of Order. And that would be part of the rules of the common council in the future as well.
I'm just looking at that if, as a board member or a council member, and we ask for a recess, like this alludes to the fact that it has to be decided by the chair.
Oh, that's a good point.
I'm wondering if, as a, as a body, if we can make that mandatory.
We could definitely bring that back to the committee. Oops. We could bring that back to the committee and ask that to be changed to something to the effect of the chair or any member of the body may recess at any point of the meeting with a majority vote.
I just didn't know if there was more, if there was another opportunity in there like that, or if there was something that referenced the body and would have just a chair or something like that. And... Could we bring some clarity to that a little bit? Maybe as it comes back or something?
Yeah, that's part of the rules of the common council. So, I mean, what we could do is we could accept these this evening, but not really take action to approve them and approve them as part of the rules of the common council at that point.
That's probably more something that I was leaning towards, you know, to, to accept them as what they are. But then maybe it wants, like if we wanted to have debate on it or something at this point, and then once we have them all, adopt them as, as a whole document rather than as a partial document right here. And I'm open for any...
I'd like to give you an example. I think why we put this together is in case meetings get out of hand, that the mayor can ask for a recess. I've been actually been researching this kind of stuff really seriously. If you watch YouTube, we're probably the most calm council in the world, if you want to believe that or not.
Probably not.
I watch council meetings and you would not believe what you see. And, and this is a good way of, I've, I've noticed that why, when watching YouTube, that a lot of times this resolves the issue. And, you know, cooler heads prevail and then they come back and, you know, for instance, the mayor or the council president can talk to that individual, get things settled down a bit, come back instead of being televised.
Well, and that's what I was hoping, that it didn't.
Right. And that's kind of why this is...
Somebody could just say, you know what, we've, we're kind of digressing. We'd like to revisit this.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think that took a two-thirds vote and we wanted to make it a, a majority vote.
Yeah.
So basically, like the most of us wanted to say, yeah, let's recess.
So I'd like more teeth in item F.
All right. All right. Well, we can send that one back if you want to make that. Well, we have an amendment on the floor. Let's deal with that first and then...
Sure. Okay. And if you want to bring up, anybody does, you're, you know, you're on that committee. If you want to do that, that's fine. Thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. Back onto the motion in hand. The way, the way I'm understanding this is that each individual item is dealing with this particular instance or something like that. And I'm sure that, for example, number one, the officer, or no one can distribute stuff at the meeting. I'm sure there's nothing in protocol that's going to contradict that later on saying that someone can bring stuff to a meeting. Because I think these were all dealt on an individual basis, you know, specific items. Is that correct?
These were all individual motions at a meeting of the protocol committee, not necessarily the same meeting, but throughout the, however many meetings we had. I think the majority of these were unanimous. There were two or three that, I don't know if any of these were. Okay. But there were two or three probably total out of all the motions we had that were not unanimous.
Jesse, I don't see an issue in discussing any of this tonight because it's not going to interfere with whatever's brought back on the next load. I highly doubt anything's going to contradict each other, the way this looks. I think we should move forward and go ahead and just debate these as they were, you know, and just include them when the other ones come in as a full document, as Alderman Benner stated. But I think we should still at least address these and, and have the debate on them. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too think we have an opportunity here tonight to kind of split this up here, to have a simple debate on these here. And, and then the next set we'll bring back. I would hope we put it, the last item on the agenda. We can excuse staff and take care of our own business here and they don't have to listen to it all. So I appreciate if that's the last item on the next agenda to Mayor.
Alderman Collier?
In regards to this tonight, in, the, the reason I had some questions is, there's one or two that I'd like to openly debate with you guys. But if we're voting on the whole thing to go forward, then there's like letter B and F I had questions with and...
You could separate them, Alderman Collier.
Okay, then I'd like to separate.
But we can't do it quite yet. First, we have to decide if we're going to take them up this evening or not. But if we do take them up, you could separate them. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking for some clarification on something that you said. You used the phrase incorporate into the rules of, that these would be incorporated into the rules of the common council and the mayor. So are there existing rules?
There are not. There's, there are some items in ordinance, but there is not a document called the rules of the common council, which is fairly common for bodies such as ours, county boards, any elected official-type bodies. And those would typically come forward, like I said, in the April organizational meetings. And that document does exist. The committee spoke about that document at the last meeting. It's just not complete yet. And it does include items A through H as well.
The document as in?
That will eventually be recommended to the common council. But we did have some items that we wanted to revise and discuss again at the last meeting before it came this direction.
If this were a board of directors in a nonprofit or a private company, I doubt that this sort of thing would be presented piecemeal. So I, I, that's the main reason I object to this sort of, to this format. And I think it's really important to see things in the whole picture because I don't know what I don't know. I don't know what's coming forward next week or the week after that and how it could relate to what's before us today. And so if the council felt uncomfortable about sending it back to committee, then possibly we could look at postponing it till the next meeting. I feel really strongly that it should be presented as one document at one time for everyone to see.
Alderman Sevanek?
Have, has the rest of the council been receiving communications on our activity?
Just what's in the council packet. So...
Because I would say that everything that we've done so far has been available to us. So all I'm trying to do is cut the workload in half here. And you've just now created an additional 15, 20 minutes of wasted time.
Alderman Collier?
I really don't think we waste a lot of time up here too often. But I can see the work that you guys have put into this. I can see where you're at. I'm gonna have a lot of questions. And there's a couple that I really don't understand how they got in here. And you guys will explain it to me. But if we're just gonna, we're not accepting these tonight. We're looking at them and moving them forward, correct? Or we would accept them?
What this motion does is it, it says that the council is in agreement with these rules and we should include them in a set of rules for the common council and mayor that will be adopted in April as part of the organizational meeting. So if we pass this this evening, you would expect these, should have numbered it, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8 items would be included in the rules of the common council and mayor.
Well, in regards to slowing down the meetings, this could do it. Because if, example B, you can debate forever. I think midnight is the deadline, but we might have some forever meetings coming up. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I think Alderman Sevanek made it very clear, you know, these items stand on their own. And he was trying to just save the councils some time instead of going on for a couple hours with this. Maybe we could cut it down and get a short meeting. You know, we got staff members that have to drive a long ways home tonight and it's a terrible night for weather. So by reducing this, and each item stands on its own. So there's nothing, it's not like a hidden agenda here. If you vote for this, you get this. That's not the way it is. It's, it's item is, every item is individual.
Being a member of this committee, I would tend to agree with what Alderman Nichols says. You would typically take up rules in their entirety. You, as Alderman Collier said, you kick all four tires. I don't have a problem with discussing these eight items, but we will, we should look at this as its entirety. Because you don't know how the other 12 rules might interact with these eight either. So I would tend to agree that that's typically the way you would do it. I'm on the committee and I should have that say as well. Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess it'd be my thought that if anybody has any concerns to air it out right now, and then if it comes back, or if the committee sees that they agree that some adjustments need to be made, well, then they can make it and bring it back to us. I'm, I'm a firm believer of committees and what they do. And just like I did with item F, I think it's understood that it needs a little bit more attention. If they do that, and I suspect it'll come back next time. I struggle with it being under the consent agenda portion of this, only from the fact that I, I agree with bringing it back. Partial like this, we talk about it, we debate about it, give the committee another opportunity to, to make some amendments to it so that, and we do that with the next one and then adopt it as, as a document from that point. But, so I would encourage any Alderman at this point, in my opinion, if you have concerns about an individual item that's here, state what, state what it is and let changes be made and, and just move forward. So, but I, I am uncomfortable approving items A through H without seeing the remainder of the items at this point, though. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Alderman Sevanek?
Yeah, I, I agree with Alderman Benner. That's not our intent. You either take it all or nothing. That's not what we're doing. And if, and the reason I did what I did as far as bringing half was already we have one item that Alderman Benner's looking at, he's not sure about. He would like possibly send that back to committee. That's going to take us more time. And you, you gave me a deadline of 30 days and now you're, you're, that's not good enough. And you want to start sending more back to committee. So I'm just saying, let's take this now. And if there's something A, B, C, if there's something you don't like, it'll go back to committee. We'll look at it and tweak it if we have to and bring it back for our final meeting, which was the deadline that you gave our committee.
Okay, so right now we have a motion on the floor to send this back to committee. I think we've discussed this pretty much to death. If we could have a roll call on that, please?
Mayor, it's a tie. Did you want to vote? It'll fail.
I'll allow it to fail.
Motion fails on roll call 4-4.
So it sounded like we wanted to kind of discuss each... We don't. It sounds like people want to discuss each of these. So do we want to just go through each of them or do we want to?
That's germane. So Mayor, at this, right. Mayor, at this time, I'll make a motion that we accept the protocol committee's recommendation on the memorandum.
So that's items A through H?
Yes.
Okay. It's motion a second to accept.
And then if, and then if anyone wants to take an individual one and make changes, this is the point where they do that.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion, and I don't have the exact language for it, but for item F, to modify that, to say that with a majority vote from the board committee or council body, that it may go into recess.
So you want, basically, either the chair or any member of the body could make a motion to recess?
Correct. Anybody can make that motion with a second and then a majority vote.
So there's a motion a second. Any further discussion on that? Alderman Collier? Okay. Alderman Nichols? Oops, maybe. There you go.
Are we, we're gonna take items one at a time?
He separated item, well, he made a motion to amend item F, basically. And we may not be able to get all these up on the screen, unfortunately, so.
I just want to be clear of the format of this.
Sure.
Discussion. Thank you.
Yes, it would be that item, but it would be amended to say any member of the body may recess at any point during the meeting with a majority, or any member may make a motion to recess at any point during the meeting. And we would recess with a majority vote, something of that effect. Alderman Collier?
Item B.
Hold on, we're still, still on just this one. So we have to take a... Okay. Alderman Sevanek? Maybe?
Just to kind of help out the, we were trying to give the mayor an opportunity here to make that motion. By doing this, he doesn't have that option anymore. He would need to get it from only the council. So what this was doing was saying the chair can do this. See what I'm saying? So the mayor could literally say, I would entertain a motion to recess at this moment. He could say that, but he can't make the motion, basically.
No, any member, I would be a member of the body.
Yeah, but you, but under Robert's rules, you can't make motions. This one would have given you the opportunity to entertain that.
So you want this to say any member, including the chair, may make a motion?
That's what it was saying, but that's...
No, that just said the chair.
The chair, which is you as the mayor.
But that...
When you run this meeting, doesn't mean a chairman of the administration or personnel committee or something. It means...
The way this is written right now, though, I could make that motion, but you couldn't. And I think what Alderman Benner wanted was either you or I could make that.
And I second his motion because I think we do need to clarify it. But what I was trying to point out is we were trying to give the mayor an opportunity here.
So can you add, including the chair?
And actually, you're not sending it back to committee. You're just making that as right here now, right?
Recommendation.
Okay, that's good then. That's, okay.
There you go. That's what you're looking for?
Is that... Well, what he's looking for is the way it was written, and then you just add, "Or any member."
Yeah. We added "any member" at the front, rather than "any member" at the back, but... Okay. Any further discussion on that one? Do you... Can we take roll call votes on this?
This one, we can, yes.
Okay.
If that's the one that you want, it's just an amendment.
This is just the amendment, yes. Okay, I think everyone voted.
Motion cured on... There we go. Motion cured on roll call eight, zero.
Okay. Did you have something as well, Alderman Collier?
B, in debate, each member has the right to speak unlimited times for an unlimited length of time. I'd like to see that be two times, eight minutes.
So you'd like to make an amendment that each member has a right to speak two times, up to eight minutes? Okay. Attorney Captain, did you want to comment on that?
And would this be excluding questions? So, as an example, someone can speak and give their opinion about something twice on an item, but if they have a question, that would be excluded from the two times, so that questions could be asked?
And was before debate, if we were debating it, and I brought it up once, I brought it up a second time, then it's done. If there's a question in regards to what we're voting on, that would be a different issue.
Okay.
So you'd add excluding questions at the end. So what do we got on there? Is there a second before we move forward with that? There's no second? Then... Pardon? There's a motion a second? Okay, now we need to make sure each member has a right to speak two times, eight minutes, excluding questions. Okay. Sure.
And then that, just... If this was adopted, just so that everyone knows, someone could still speak beyond twice, you would just need to suspend the rules, two-thirds vote, so...
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. In the past, limiting how many times an alderman speaks, I don't think's really ever been done. I mean, I... We've had long meetings in the past, but that was also for good reason. And there's even been aldermen tonight that didn't quite understand what was being said, and other aldermen had to talk more than two times to be able to straighten it out and get the point across and exactly what it is. And if the concern is that we're gonna be here until two o'clock in the morning, that's not gonna happen, and there's other Robert's rules that could be used to end debate and get a vote out and stuff like that, I am not in favor of a limiting time or how many times an alderman can speak, because if it goes on too long, you know, someone's gonna jump in and use one of the other motions from Robert's rules and end the debate. And I'm sure everybody else will be right along with it. So there's already stuff in Robert's rules to deal with long debates and repetitiveness. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenek?
Yeah, and about the repetitiveness, that is something that's being addressed. But anyways, I want to say this. I took an oath to represent my district and to follow the rules of the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the United States and the City of Manassas, and by God, don't ever take my right away to ever debate an issue or stymie any of my time or any of my colleagues' time to address our community. That's what I was elected for, and I hope that I continue to do a great job in doing that for my community.
Alderman Collier?
I apologize if you think I slapped you in the face. My motion was just to keep the meetings going at a timely order and have valid discussion. I was not here to start an argument tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad I seconded that for the purposes of discussion. I'm wondering if B is even really necessary when we have Option C, which is to call the question with two-thirds of majority, and we can all use that at any time, and it has to be voted on. So I think that's a tool that can be used to enforce, for lack of a better word, the concerns trying to be addressed in Letter B.
So the Robert's rules right now, there's a rule that you are allowed to speak two times, up to ten minutes on any question, and that's what this was about. This is one of the ones that was not unanimous in the committee, but that's what this was about, was to create a rule that was not consistent with Robert's rules. Alderman Sevenek?
You addressed it, and that's why we took a strong stand on this, because I certainly never want to stymie this community's debate. You know, what's next? We only allow people to speak from the gallery for two minutes or something. I don't ever want that to happen. I want a lively discussion to go on and debate all the time up here, and that's what our country's all about.
The motion... Oh, okay. Alderman Benner? I was trying to remember what the motion was, so...
It's okay. I agree with Alderman Nichols that maybe B doesn't have to be there. I agree with, in spirit, and I try to follow the speaking twice rule myself, but I do fear being stifled if the dialogue goes on and I do have additional input and not given unanimous consent to speak again. And although I am definitely in favor of the two-speaking rule, because I believe in it, that you should be able to say what's on your mind, listen to everybody speak, and say what they have to say, and then give your final debate, and then be done with it, and then go to vote. But sometimes our conversations kind of digress quite a bit, and you need to provide some additional comment, and I wouldn't want to be stifled by people not giving me the opportunity to speak again. But I think I agree with Alderman Nichols that possibly B just goes away, and then Item C becomes... Kind of becomes the item where you just say, "Now, sin off, let's just vote." I'm not sure, but... I don't know that we even have to have it there. If we're not gonna limit it to two times, then I'm not sure. I'm on the fence on this. Thanks.
Alderman Sevenek?
If you recall, two meetings ago, the mayor tried to pull this one on me. Do you remember?
And that was...
And then he stopped.
No, it was because we were getting off topic.
And he was trying to follow what he believes is in Robert's rules. But I can't stress this enough, and I don't know what I'm saying, and if the council's understanding what I'm saying. And that is, is that when we set these rules, rules were set up to protect what's called the minority. And you gave me a perfect example right there. We could stymie your debate now, and I don't want to do that ever to anybody. I... This council can change, you know, in April. This, you know, who knows, someday this could be a... I'm just trying to keep the politics out of it, so that's why I believe it's important that we looked at that and said, "No, we're not gonna stymie people from being able to have debate."
Just to comment on what you just said, the reason I was following Robert's rules was because we were not following Robert... City ordinance with regards to having our staff be able to speak and asking for unanimous consent, when it does state right in the ordinance that they must reply if someone asks. And that's why I started going that direction.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make one quick comment about taking out B, and that is, the rules of the council are set up underneath Robert's Rules of Order. If you take B out, your stymie is right back in there again, and then we have to follow the speak twice, and then the council can stymie you. This is kind of a safeguard, so you don't get stymied. Because if that is taken out, we have to follow Robert's rules, and there's nothing in there that's... The council can make rules against Robert's rules and change a little bit, but if that's not in there, we're supposed to follow Robert's rules, which means that we'd have the two speaking... Two rights of speak, and then have to get unanimous consent to speak after that. So I'm in favor for keeping it in. Thank you.
Okay. The motion that's on the floor right now is to... Basically, it says in the debate each... Oh, you have it right up there, right, "To speak two times, up to eight minutes." If we could have a roll call vote on that?
Motion fails on roll call one, seven.
Anyone else have discussion items? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I spent some time researching Robert's Rules of Order online today, but it's always difficult to find things that are the same and consistent. So I need some clarification on Letter D regarding points of order. Near the end of that, it says, "A point of order is non-debatable, however may be ruled by a two-thirds majority." Maybe overruled by a two-thirds majority. And I found some things today that said it required a majority. So I'm looking for some clarification from Attorney Captain on that.
You have... I believe that we discussed this in the meeting and upped it to a two-thirds.
Correct.
Because we wanted to make sure that if you were going to override, that it was something that the entire council wanted, not just a couple members of the council. So I think... So you believe as well that it's a majority in Robert's rules?
That's correct. It's a majority in Robert's rules, but the ad hoc Protocol Committee decided that they wanted it to be overruled by a two-thirds vote.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification and for letting us know what happened in the meeting. Letter G, "A motion to adjourn shall always be in order." And I'm hoping someone from the committee can help me better understand what that means and what that would look like if a motion to adjourn was made in the middle of a meeting.
You could... For example, right now, you could not make a motion to adjourn because we are in the middle of a vote. As soon as we take action on Alderman Sevenek's motion to... Is it Alderman Se... Whose motion was it? Was it Alderman Sevenek?
Yeah, that's me.
To accept. Yes. So, once Alderman Sevenek's motion to accept is voted on, you could make a motion immediately to adjourn, and the council could adjourn at that point without taking up Items I, K, and... Well, and... So...
Because of what... Of how that's stated, does the chair have an ability to overrule?
No.
Or to...
No. It's just like if three members got up and left, we would adjourn, because we do not have a quorum anymore, and we'd be forced to adjourn. So, at any point in time during the meeting, and that is part of Robert's rules, I believe, as well. That was just clarifying what Robert's rules said, for the sake of the council.
Are you saying Robert's rules indicates that a motion to adjourn is always in order?
I believe so, yes. It says as per... Yeah, pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay. Because that was another issue of conflict that I had in my research, where it was described as a privileged motion in that the chair maintained ability to accept that motion or call it out of order because there was business to be conducted.
Okay. This would not allow the chair to do that. Did you want to amend? No, this is just a majority vote to adjourn. That was the question she had before about points of order.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Sorry. I'm just reading what we have here.
Oh.
And so how might I go about offering a change to that at this point, to make it a privileged motion in which the chair would have the ability to rule on that motion in the interest of business?
I think that's fine, and we can get the correct verbiage to bring back, if that is something that the entire council wishes to see at this point. So I'll accept that as an amendment. Is there a second to that amendment? Seeing none, I guess that motion would die, then. Did you have anything else, Alderman Nichols?
Uh, yeah, one more thing.
Okay.
Back to Letter D, the very last sentence, "Points of order which are recognized shall be recorded in the official minutes." It's been our practice that points of order are always recognized and should not be ignored, and so I would move that we remove that last sentence, because it is counter to what is in the middle of the paragraph, where it says, "The chair shall immediately acknowledge the point of order and rule on it."
We can take that as just a friendly amendment that just would say, "Points of order shall be recorded in official minutes," because they shall all be recognized, if no one has an objection to that. Just to really erase or strike which are recognized.
Okay, thank you.
That's not really an amendment. We're just gonna-
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Accept that without objection here. Any other discussion? So, I heard a ding. Oh, you're back.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if there was any other discussion before I asked my question about what this process will look like going forward, just so we're all clear on that. It's my understanding now that we are going to somehow affirm these rules this evening, and then at the next meeting, more rules will come forward, and then we'd be looking at it at an entire... As an entire document.
So there'll be about this many more rules that would come forward at the next meeting, and you could see all those rules. They're part of our minutes from... Not minutes, but part of our packet from the last protocol meeting. There's six or... There's eight or ten of them as well. And then we would take both sets of rules and incorporate them into a final document.
And then when that final document becomes available, we'd be able to make changes and amendments again?
You would be able to amend that again at the council, and what that document would be would be a recommendation to the organizational committee of the next common council. And that document would be given to the next organizational committee, and they could amend it again if they wanted to at that first meeting, or they could throw it out and start over, or they could do anything they want with it, because they're their rules, not ours.
Thank you.
So right now, we have a motion on the floor to accept as amended, and we amended Item F, just that any member of the body could make the motion to recess, including the chair, that we would record all points of order, and... Was that it? I think that was it, right? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? The whole thing, yep.
Motion-
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Okay. Item I is action items. We have the accounts payable and payroll for December 29th, 2017 through January 11th, 2018. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to accept or approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 12/29/2017 through 1/11/2018 in the amount of $8,301,767.91.
Here's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Ready? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for the 2017-19 licensing period. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2017 through 2019 licensing period per the January 11th, 2018 memo.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item three is the closed caption requirements. Do we want to discuss or have a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Um, yes, Mayor. I'm looking at your memo, and, uh, what the heck is this? I have an article in the Green Bay Press Gazette. You have here a dollar a minute plus additional editing, and in, in the Green Bay Press Gazette article, it says that it's a dollar an hour.
That is not what we heard from UW Fox Valley. We can double check, but they told us a dollar a minute.
Also, yeah, they're trying to make money. No, I'm just kidding.
That's a big difference, though.
It is a big difference, but not only that, too, but, um, I'm a big YouTuber. I like watching when there's nothing on TV, and once in a while, I accidentally hit the wrong button and closed caption comes on. So I mean, if, if somebody really needs to watch a council meeting and wants, and needs closed caption, they can always go to YouTube and watch it on YouTube. In fact, I no longer, I have U-verse, AT&amp;T U-verse, and it comes on pretty bad, let's just say that. It doesn't come in very well, and I prefer to watch it on YouTube on my TV. So I just don't, I don't know how many people are out there that actually need this service. You know, I can understand it's, it's the law, it's part of the federal government law, but, you know, in your member, in your memo, so the public knows, you're talking that, you know, in order to have closed caption, we need to spend an additional $10,000, and I don't think that's necessary. I think we need to do a little more research on this before we make any kind of decision, but, yeah. Somehow on our website, I think we need to indicate on the front page, if you wish to watch council meetings, that please check it on our website or watch it on YouTube for closed caption, so that we are covered under the law at this point.
So this is a decision by the City of Green Bay?
I realize that.
That they will not air any common council, any programming that is not closed caption on their station. So unless they change their minds, which both the City of Manasha and the City of Nina are working with them, letting them know some of the same things that you have, we don't have...
Right, City of Nina is still televising their council meetings, and we've stopped.
They have not had a council meeting since January 1st.
Okay. Probably why, then.
Yeah, so they have not...
And then I was also told so is Fox Crossing, still televised.
Okay, they may not have had one since January 1st then either, but we did verify that with City of Nina, that they have not had a meeting since January 1st. So this is something the City of Green Bay, though, has decided.
I mean, well, let's open this up for more discussion about whatever. I just, I think that I don't want to not be able to inform our public, because there might be less than a handful of people that need closed captioning.
I would agree with you.
And if they need that option, I'm letting the public know that that option is available on YouTube, because they provide that service. And to ask our government to provide it special for $10,000 so that they can watch it on Spectrum or something, to me, is, is a waste of tax dollars, and that's not fair, and when it's available at another location. So I see a light come on. I'll let others talk about this, but I think we need to follow this a little more, and I also think, somewhere I was reading that, in that Green Bay Press Gazette article, that Green Bay is looking at different type of ruling and legislation that would cover these types of meetings.
Alderman Collier?
Um, as far as closed caption goes, a lot of people have asked me why the meeting has not gone, and I found out earlier tonight why. I understand that it's mandatory. That's my understanding. And if the federal government says you got to do it, or because of the stations, that's just like ADA laws, there might only be four people in town that need them, but you got to give the service to them, even though they could probably pick it up someplace else. If they don't have availability to YouTube or something else, then, then I guess that's why the government says we get to pay for it for everybody.
I guess I just want to make this clear, that this is not a City of Manasha decision. We would love to continue doing this, the same way we've always done it. We do have availability through other means, but the City of Green Bay has said that this is the only way that they will televise our meetings, and I think that Alderman Sevenek makes a good point, that we should go back and talk to them a little bit further. It is very expensive, what they're asking us to do, but I do want to make sure our meetings are available to everyone. That's the whole purpose of the ADA, that everything is available to everyone, not everything's available if you jump through 17 hoops and stand on your head and face east. So we will work with them and, and see what the other options are as well. Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. My other concern, too, is that, you know, I keep hearing that we need to make this available to those who are, have hearing issues. But the thing is, is that, does that mean that we need to make this available to people who can't afford cable television or U-verse or any other type of service? That, to me, is less fair, and as far as YouTube, that's available to anybody. That's a free service that you can pick up at your local library if you don't own a computer or anything like that. So, I mean, there are avenues that, that are out there, but boy, I'll tell you what, the cost to provide cable or U-verse into your homes has gotten quite high, and that's, I bet you there's probably a third of the council members who probably don't even have that service, and that's not fair to our, or even in this community, and that's not fair to them. So, yeah, let's follow up and do more research on this and make sure we're not getting ahead of ourselves on this, but, you know, I'd like to say you can watch it on YouTube, but how are they going to see this if it's not televised to go watch it on YouTube? That's why I asked if we could maybe possibly put this on our website to, to make it a little more clear that we're covered by the law, that we do provide closed captioning if you follow the council meetings that we post on YouTube.
I can put something up where you can find them on our front page of our website tomorrow. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I do find it interesting that in an effort to make something more accessible, that being the intent, the effect is the exact opposite, when we now have restricted access to government viewing because of one decision-maker. I'm wondering if we, you know, we're not the only person, we're not the only community in this boat. So if we can, first of all, reach out to Green Bay and ask them what they are doing, whether it's a piece of technology or contracting with someone, to make their meetings closed captioned, and then to reach out to the other communities who are facing the same issue and figure out if we can't enter jointly into a contract or figure out a way to work this out in an affordable fashion together for the benefit of our communities.
Thanks. We can do that, and we have reached out to Nina already. Alderman Taylor?
I certainly like to see if the federal government, the mandate, the FCC ruling, and if there's some grant programs that help communities put this out there with the closed captioning. It's unfortunate, people that, that have this disability, but they do, they do, they do need this type of service, so I would like to see if there's other options out there for us.
So without objection, we'll leave this on for the next agenda, and we'll move on to item four, the Class B beer and Class C wine license for Wilskies Pub, 528 Milwaukee Street. Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the Class B beer and Class C wine liquor license for Wilskies Pub LLC doing business as Wilskies Pub at 528 Milwaukee Street, Manasha, for the licensing year 2017 through 2018.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Do you want a roll call vote? Could we have a roll call vote, please? What's your little spot over there?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. There is one, resolution 118. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve R-1-18.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be voting against this. As I stated before, I am displeased with entering agreements with certain communities that don't follow through, and that's why I won't go along with this.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll, oh, not on. Motion carried on roll call 6-2.
Item N is public comment on any matter that was on the agenda this evening. Does anyone wish to speak from the public? And seeing no one, I'll accept a motion to adjourn at this time. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Broadcast of the City of Manasha Administration Committee, Board of Public Works, and common council meetings are produced by University Studios of the University of Wisconsin, Fox Valley. Manasha residents and interested parties can obtain information about these meetings and meeting agendas from the city website, www.cityofmanasha-wi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manasha issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-5117, contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Completing the electronic feedback form on the website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited for playback.